Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring the September twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Prelinger? Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Bagan? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Shaboom?
Here.
Mr. Phelps? Here. Can we add the notification, why don't you please, Mr. Prelinger?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District, and grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken will be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. Amen. Let's legally just.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to number two, Mr. President.
Okay, blessed it, people who do make public comments, please state your name and address, and please keep your comments to five minutes. And first up, we have Sarah. Quiber Ratch?
Quiber.
Quiber.
This is Sarah.
You can, if you want to stand up, you may, or if you don't have to.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen from the school board. On behalf of the SAT prep committee, me, Sarah Walkers, Virgo Asher, Alyssa Mariner, and Liam Starkey, Liam Starkey, thank you so much for having us tonight. Tonight, we came here to discuss the future of Interboro High School and our student success. We came up with a proclamation on the importance of having an SAT preparation club at the high school. We have students coming here with high academic standards that hope to become very successful in the future. Obtaining a high SAT score will lead us to, lead us to a closer pathway of getting into our junior university and pursuing our careers. This can only be accomplished with the help of the SAT prep club, which prepare us and other students for this test. Here I have packets of a slideshow talking about. My apologies, I may not have enough, so.
Well, we left at least one.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks. You're welcome.
Thank you.
If you turn to page five within the packet, there is a brief summary of the background and importance of SAT scores. Virgo Asher will read and elaborate further details on the topic.
The SAT is a very prestigious test that guarantees a student's overall success and is getting into a very good university after our school. If a student were to perform well on this exam, it will help their individual score stand out to high-ranking universities. These types of universities can facilitate them to very successful pathways, considering that education there is very dense and able toward their career. If the SAT prep course was provided at Interboro High School, it'll help give our students the opportunity they need in the future to be successful. Although many psychologists have stated that significant SAT scores are optional, it still doesn't disregard the fact that a student still needs a strong application to be easier for them. If they were given resources to perform very well on the exam, it will not only help their chances to get in, but now they are given more time to add more to their application knowing that their score will increase their chances of getting into the university.
Thank you. As you turn to page seven, eight, Liam Starkey will elaborate on the primary standings of the SAT and funding possibilities to the public in that.
Considering that the SAT prep course isn't available in Interboro's curriculum, finding available SAT preparation through touring facilities can be very difficult to accomplish. The average students that live in the district come from low-income families. Not only will it be burdensome for parents trying to find time to drive their children to those sessions, but it's also very expensive. SAT touring sessions are priced at around the average of a hundred dollars an hour. Usually lessons are two hours per session for about two times a week. Parents have to pay around four hundred dollars a week with a total of sixteen hundred dollars per month. It's important to take into account that some of those families make that amount of money in a week. With this SAT course provided at the school, not only will students learn in an environment that is closer to them, but the lessons will contain all resources needed with a fee of ten dollars. We will provide sufficient materials and preparation for students in an environment that they feel prepared to meet them. This will be done via a website created and provided for students to use as a resource. Students paying a fee will not only ensure that they're included within the group, but the money will benefit towards them for snacks. Information about funding will be elaborated in the next page. If students perform well on the test and obtain ideal scores, the Education Department will receive funds towards the school. The money will then be used in the future to advance the club into a course again, as well as help pay for other aspects for the school. In terms of the funding, we hope the digital assets can provide us with materials needed for students and teachers. For instance, practice booklets, packets, and online resources that were used when the SAT course was in the curriculum previously will be beneficial for this club. As for student fees, we'd like also to ask students to pay a fee of ten dollars when entering the club. This not only ensures they are registered in the program, but the money will go toward providing them with snacks and essentials.
Thank you. As you progress to the final point, please look at page ten. As a lesson for Riley to discuss the future planning and building and structure of the SAT prep work.
So as far as ours go, the course will be hosted after school for thirty minutes from two twenty-five to fifty-five twice a week. And for topics, we'll be covering math, English, and writing. And the teachers that offer up their time to do it were Mr. Mealy and Ms. Adlin. And for resources, there will be a link to the classroom where students will first be introduced to the course. After pressing on the link provided, students will have access to our website. The SAT Preparation Club will take place over, like, a week, with a span of four weeks. One week will cover English, one will cover math, and the third, students will take a practice test, where the fourth will go over what the majority of students are struggling with.
We hope that with our voices and passion for the club, we will grant them student academic success rewards. We thank you all for your time during this meeting, and we are open to, and we are open to answering any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes.
I'm not even going to attempt your question, so. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Very detailed.
Thank you.
Very thorough. We are going to add Mr. Litch and Ms. Riley, set up a meet with yous to discuss this merger to see what we can do to help you as a whole to get it set up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Riley? Thank you for coming this evening. I will give Mr. Litch a call tomorrow, and we'll try and get it set up for next week. Okay?
Thank you.
All right with you, Mr. Litch?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. No, don't start. This is your role. You've got a chance to go, go.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else here, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Okay. All righty, moving on to, were they usual or what? I'll tell you, the enthusiasm of them kids, that's, it's great. It's amazing, it's that. Moving on to number three, Mr. Evans?
Motion three point one, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments in the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next, we will hear from our solicitor, Mr. Pupiel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the public, and board members as well, and Mrs. Riley. Very short report this evening. It's a tax assessment appeal time, and there is a motion here to authorize our office to prosecute the appeals that are appropriate for, appropriately determined to be appealed as under assessed and undervalued, and to defend those appeals that taxpayers have filed with regard to their assessment. If you'll recall, the reassessment was supposed to provide values as of January one, two thousand and nineteen, and then it went into effect in two thousand and twenty, or, sorry, in two thousand and twenty-one, which was also the year of the pandemic. And if you'll recall, it was, there were some inconsistencies with regard to the overall reassessment, and this year, the common level ratio came out. So you're three years into a brand-new reassessment, and a property that was valued for assessed purposes at a hundred thousand dollars is now subject to a reduction to the common level ratio of approximately thirty percent. Now, the defense to that is that the value of the property is more than a hundred thousand dollars in using that scenario. But the fact that the common level ratio dropped almost thirty percent within two years is an indication of, of the problems that I have brought forward to this board and the public previously about the entire countywide reassessment. Unfortunately, there's not much we can do but work through it on a year-by-year basis. But I wouldn't be surprised if, if there were a lawsuit sometime in the next year or so to do all of it. That would be the only report I have for this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pupiel. But you do have to stay toward the end.
I, um, I've read it. Yeah, it's usually where it's the best.
All right. Number five, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Finance, motion five point one, that the Treasury report for the month ending August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments in the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next, Mr. Evans?
Motion five point two, that fund disbursements in the amount of six million nine hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirteen cents to approve.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Do we have any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to number seven, the committee reports. Seven point one, we had Delaware County Community College. Mr. Goldsboro?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. We have a number of things, just a number of things that I want to bring to the board's attention. One is, I was, we were notified that the College Board of Trustees at Delaware County Community College, trustee Ellen Reep's term of service has concluded, and she's not seeking reappointment to the board. This creates a vacancy starting January first of two thousand and twenty-three and concluding December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-eight. It's a six-year term. And so according to the sponsorship agreement, sponsoring school districts have the responsibility of selecting the college's board of trustees. So under established procedure, the liaison committee, which I am a part of, screens the candidates and forwards its recommendations to the sponsoring school district directors for approval by majority vote. And so it looks like this month, we're notifying all the school boards and letting them know. Everything is being posted on media outlets and on the college website about this. President Gates Black and Chair Kevin Scott will be screening applications for selected candidates in October, and they will schedule, the committee will be recommending a candidate at the end, in October, and will be voting on that, on that in November. So that's, that's for us, and, and, and so I do have a flyer here that I think maybe we might want to post somewhere or something, anybody that might be interested in, in, in being a, a board of trustee, and it gives a number of the, number of the items that, you know, and involvement and in, and an understanding of the community and its educational employment needs, along with another, other lists of things. I will forward this email, this document to the, to the rest of the school board members. It's Marge, and, and possibly maybe we want to put a link to it or something like that on the, on the website. So anybody that's interested in the community that might be want to, might want to throw their hat in the ring, they can do so, because we are, we are a sponsoring school district. The other thing is, a couple of other things going on that I got from the president of Delaware County Community College. One is enrollment updates. So Interboro currently has three hundred and twenty students enrolled, just people that live within the district that are currently enrolled in Delaware County Community College for a total of twenty-seven hundred and forty-six credits. So it's quite a, quite a sizable population that is, that is participating at Delaware County Community College. Currently, we have fifteen students duly enrolled, and they have dual enrollment, so they're taking classes at Interboro and also at Delaware County Community College for a total of eighty-one credits. And I think this is, this is a document that all the school board, school board members received earlier, and they got a chance to look through this. Also, there is a search for a new president. The, the current president is going to be retiring, stepping down, and so they've completed the first step of their search process with development of a search profile, and the search committee will begin selecting candidates in November, and it looks like the president, they're, they're planning on having the president announced right around December twenty-first. So, and there's stuff on the website about that, for the job announcement, for anybody that might be interested in that, or at least finding out what that, what it is about in being the president of Delaware County Community College. Speaking of, they also received a scholarship. The scholarship program is off to a good start, and to date, over two hundred and fifty students have been awarded scholarships totaling more than three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And included in this are a total of forty-four incoming students. And so that's nice. The, the other thing is the Exton location is going to be, going to be consolidated, and they, and that will be, the Board of Trustees has made the decision to consolidate the staff and the resources, and that campus will be closing as of July first, I believe, in February, yeah, yeah. So that will be closing down, that, that particular campus in Exton. The college also received a grant, Governor Wolf awarded Delaware County Community College a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar redevelopment assistance and capital program, and that's going to, that brings the total award to five million dollars for the construction of the new campus in Upper Darby. And there is a, my next liaison meeting will be on October twelfth, and there is a school board appreciation dinner along with superintendents on October twelfth at six P. M. If anyone is interested in going, please respond. Usually, it's a nice program, they usually have the, get a chance to co-mingle with, with other school board members and, and superintendents, and get to find out a little bit more about the Delaware County Community College. So there is an R S V P if you are interested in going. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Moving on to seven point two, capital improvement committee. Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir. Ed and I, along with members of the admin team, did get a brief update this morning from the engineer on the progress at both the Glen Olden admin building as well as the high school. As far as the Glen Olden admin building, they've been holding design team meetings to, to coordinate the various disciplines that will be involved in the construction operations. They're close to finalizing the R F P, and once the R F P is finalized, they plan to do a walkthrough with some suggested contractors on September thirtieth, which I might try to attend. And then the proposals are, are expected to go out by October twentieth, with roughly a two-week turnaround for that, with a soft target of construction start in around December, January of this year. And the construct, the project duration is expected to be approximately one year for the Glen Olden admin. So everything is on track for that location. As far as the high school update, the, the design is on schedule. They expect that to go out to bid by the end of this year. The architect's still holding his biweekly meetings, and there's, they have to, because of the size of the addition being put on, there's a state requirement that they hold an Act thirty-four hearing, which will be on November tenth, and that's essentially to present the footprint to the community and other stakeholders and give them an opportunity for feedback. That, that feedback period is thirty days. But that, aside from cancer permitting and all that, this is a, a state requirement, kind of a, a legal hearing to give the public an opportunity for feedback. Other than that, I do expect that they'll be having a booth at the back of the school night on nine twenty-eight to provide some information to the community about the high school project. And according to the agenda, our next scheduled capital improvement committee meeting will be held virtually at six thirty P. M. on October twenty-fifth. And that's it for us for now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to number eight.
From the Office of Personnel, motion that the following personnel actions be approved, starting with eight point one on page two, and then going to eight point one zero on page six.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
Motion number nine, with regret that the following retirements be approved. Nine point one, Margaret Evans, bus driver with transportation, with twenty-three years of service at the district, be approved for retirement effective August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Myself, I would like to thank Miss Sevens for her longevity, twenty-three years driving a bus, driving with kids around, ask before he talks. So we, we do appreciate it. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Curriculum Instruction, motion that the following items be approved. Ten point one on page six, going to ten point one four on page eight.
Second.
Page seven, I'm sorry.
Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Special Education and Pupil Services, motion that the following items be approved, eleven point one to eleven point one one on page nine.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments in the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved. Twelve point one, that the board of school directors approve the Adobe Creative Cloud renewal for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year at a cost of two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to be paid from district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments in the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Facilities, motion that the following items be approved. Thirteen point one, that the board of school directors approve William Galloway, Corey LaVenture, and Caitlin Scott Pringhurst to attend PASBO's two thousand and twenty-two facilities transportation and safety conference and exhibits in Lancaster, PA from October twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, including registration, accommodations, and travel expenses at costs not to exceed one thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars, seventy-five cents, to be paid from district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments in the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved. Fourteen point one, that the board of school directors approve Martin High School and Tara Taylor to attend the PASBO food service conference and seminar in Lancaster, PA on November eighth and ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, at costs not to exceed thirteen hundred dollars to be paid with district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I should have said this on the last motion, you know, we do appreciate our administrators taking advantage of the different things that are out there and staying abreast of everything for our district, so we do appreciate that. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion fifteen is a roll call motion that the board of school directors approve the revision to the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year calendar for grades nine through twelve.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, clear the roll call, please.
Mr. Willis?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shaboom?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion sixteen, that the board of school directors approve the memorandum of understanding between Interboro School District and B C I U for participation in the rapid antigen assessment for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion seventeen, that the board authorizes and directs the solicitor to initiate and prosecute tax year two thousand and twenty-three real estate tax assessment appeals for undervalued real estate. The board authorizes and directs the solicitor and the district's real estate appraiser to determine appropriate assessments to appeal without consideration of the property type in accordance with the district's standard methodologies that have been approved by the executive director of operations slash business administrator.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion eighteen, that board of school directors approve the contract amendment with Virtue Blackburn, transportation consultant, to assist with the day-to-day operations of the Interboro Transportation Department during the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. Contract amendment not to exceed ten thousand dollars to be paid from district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Do we have any old business to address? Hearing none, we will now hear from our superintendent, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I would like to welcome everyone back to school, especially all of our new families. I hope everyone had a good start to the year. I want to thank all of our parents who have been attending our back-to-school nights. It's been great to see everyone. Parents seem very happy, our kids are happy, and so it's been a good start. We do have a couple upcoming back-to-school nights. September twenty-sixth is Norwoods, Tinnicum is September twenty-eighth, and September twenty-ninth is the high school. As Mr. Evans said, prior to the high school back-to-school night, the district will have a presentation that will be open to the community, as well as community members, as well as the parents, as well as the parents of our students, for an overview of the high school renovation project. Our architect, engineer, Mr. High School, Mr. Galloway, myself, we will all be in attendance for this participation, and we do encourage all of our family members, families, to come out and participate. The district is experiencing a shortage of bus drivers as are school districts across the county and the country. We do recognize and we want to acknowledge that we know we're experiencing delays, especially in the afternoon for drop-off, changes to the bus schedules, and also with our sports, sporting events. I appreciate the parents' cooperation, you know, and we really are working behind the scenes to resolve these bus issues, and I want to thank the board for their support as we've been having discussions. If you are interested in considering becoming a bus driver or monitor, we have a lot of information that's now going to be posted, not only on the website, but also around on the electronic signs that will be advertising what positions are available. So not only drivers and monitors, we have instructional assistants, P C As, substitute nurses, and also in food services. So please check out the website in case you might be interested in coming to work here in the district. Fall sports are in full swing. Today, I was able to get over and watch our girls' soccer teams compete against Cardinal O'Hara. It was a beautiful day, we got a lot of parents out, so I encourage folks to come out and watch our. watch our students participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Do we have any comments, any board members? Hearing none, please visit the Interboro School District website at wwwinterborosd.org for further information on the meetings listed below. On Monday, October 3rd, 2022, a finance committee meeting with a GVO meeting immediately following will be held virtually at 7:00 PM. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held virtually on Monday, October 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held at the Administration Building on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. On Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, a capital improvement committee meeting will be held virtually at 6:00 PM. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all for coming.